Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Mr. Gignac?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. The chair would recognize school committee and Doherty.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to ask that we do the special order of business, suspend the rules to do that first, which I think it is first on the agenda anyway.
Oh, okay.
To spotlight on excellence, the Stocklosa Knowledge Bowl competition.
Hi, my name's Carolyn Rochel. I'm coordinator of special programs for the districts, and I have the honor of being our district knowledge bowl coordinator. This is one of the most beneficial things to the Lowell Public Schools, and I think you would find, and all of our school committee members have served as judges and attended in our, on our bowl night, so I want to thank all of you for being there. It was a really wonderful competition this year, and I am so happy the mayor has invited all of our students this year to be recognized in the spotlight and excellence. We've been doing Knowledge Bowl since 1988, so we're coming up on 30 years in a couple of years if you could believe it, that we've been doing it that long. I haven't been doing it that long. This is an academic contest. These students have been working since back in October, November. As teams at each school, we have 10, 10 students on a team. All eight middle schools compete over seven nights in March, and this year I'm happy to introduce you to our winners, the Wang School. We're here to acknowledge our students. I would also like all of our students that participated that are here tonight to please stand so that we can acknowledge all of our students. It takes many people to put this together, and I also want to acknowledge all of the coaches from each eight middle schools, so if our coaches could please stand as well. So, we are very thankful that Jack Pennard prepared a very short video for us to watch so you can kind of get an overview of the competition, and then we will have Matt Stahl, principal of the Wang School, come up and introduce you to the coaches and the students of our winning team. Okay? So, we'll watch a quick video.
So, tonight's, tonight's final, we're gonna have the five rounds. We're gonna start with our math match round, and we're gonna get the kids out of the room to do their math round for 10 minutes. Then we'll be back and we'll be doing our toss-up, our current events, our toss-up and bonus, and our speed round, and we're really excited for it. I think it's gonna be a very close game tonight. Symbols is the next category. The coat of arms of what country features an Indian and kangaroo?
Inuit.
Australia.
That is correct. European history, European history. These are among the founders of what modern country? Focus the first, Napoleon Bonaparte.
Francis.
That is correct. Sweet stories is the next category, sweet stories. These lines are from what story? "I wanted a cup of water, screamed."
Charlie and the Chocolate Factory.
That is correct. And that brings us to the end of the round. Kids, you can join your coaches and your teammates. Numerically, the area of a square is eight times its perimeter. What is the length of one side? The answer, 32. Again, the Latin daily answering correctly for 15 points. Your first state, current event question. Earlier this month, several Massachusetts cities and towns were able to witness the aurora borealis in the nighttime sky. What is the more common name for the aurora borealis? Captains, maybe see your answers. The answer is northern lights. All three teams answering correctly. Congratulations. That brings us to the end of this round. Please go join your teammates and your coaches, who will be back in two minutes with the bonus round. Until the 19th century, doctors believed that either, that either blood did not circulate or could stagnate in the extremities, or that too much of it caused any number of different maladies. To treat these conditions, they would routinely recommend the.
Dairy.
Riches?
That is correct. We have one more bonus question under health history. In 1928, scientists discovered that peppers are four times richer than lemons in what anti-stirb vitamin?
Vitamin C.
That is correct. Military is the next category for all three teams. Reminiscent of a clash of canines, what is an aerial battle between?
Wing.
Dog, dogfight.
Dogfight is correct. Your first of two bonus questions. Military being the category. In military time, express 25 minutes to 5:00 in the afternoon.
6:35.
That is correct. Physiology for all three teams, physiology. What twin mucous membranes stretched across the landings vibrate during phonation?
Wing.
Vocal voice.
That is correct. Government forms is the next category for all three teams, government forms. What basic form of government has been described as two wolves and one sheep voting?
Wing.
Democracy.
That is correct. Aviation is the next category for all three teams, aviation. This is about what airplane engines? They break down less often. They're moving parts?
Wing.
Jet engines.
That is correct. American government is the next category for all three teams. Which constitutional amendment allows United States citizens to engage in peaceful demonstrations?
The First Amendment.
That is correct. And that brings us to the end of round four. Final applause for players. Wow. Reflexive verb is one whose direct object is the same as what other part of the sentence?
Wing.
The subject.
Correct. Hydrates are substances formed by combining chemical compounds with what compound?
Carols.
Water.
Correct. The altitude in the atmosphere at which the temperature drops to 32 degrees Fahrenheit is known as what?
Wing.
Freezing point.
That is correct. What textile is associated with Francis Lowell, Sam's?
Clot.
Once again?
Cotton cloth.
That is correct, very good. What is the term for a photograph or print that is bigger than the original photo?
Enlargement.
Correct. The chemical symbol for what metal comes from the Latin word ferum?
Iron.
Correct. The ancient Greek Phidippides ran from Marathon to what city?
Wink.
Athens.
Correct. What point of view is used in this verse by William Wordsworth? "I gave."
First person.
Correct. In the famous political cartoon by Benjamin Franklin with the words "join or die," for what does the letter P stand?
Wayne.
Pennsylvania.
Correct. And that brings us to the end of the round, the end of this year's Knowledge Bowl. That was incredibly exciting. Thank you all so much. Congratulations to the Wang Team who has won the Knowledge Bowl this year. Congratulations to the Wang. You're gonna also be getting the first place trophy and the traveling trophy, so congratulations to you. The Wang Team will be representing Lowell Regional Knowledge Bowl in June, and I will invite all of you to join us, okay? So, good luck to them there. Congratulations. Thank you all for coming. Have a wonderful night.
Well, I hope you were impressed as we were when we saw how much knowledge that our kids have, and I want to just showcase what wonderful and intelligent and high-achieving students that we have within the Lowell Public Schools. We're very proud of all of them. But in particular, we're here to recognize the Wang School, so I'd like to bring up Matt Stahl, principal of the Wang, who'll introduce us to the coaches and our students.
So, first I wanted to say thank you to the mayor and the school committee for recognizing not only the Wang but all the teams. That was incredibly kind of you, and the kids behind us, we all know how special they are. I also want to give a special thank you to Carolyn and all the work she did this year, but every year she does with the Knowledge Bowl, so a big round of applause for everything she does. So, we're incredibly proud of this team. I have the honor of introducing the two coaches who are gonna come up and introduce you to this amazing group of students that you see behind you. So, if Jolene Roy and Karen Cole could come up to the microphone and please, round of applause for them and all the work that they did.
Good evening. It is with great pride that I present to you the Wang 2016 Knowledge Bowl team, and I want to really emphasize, they were a team. In alphabetical order, we have Christian Chow. Allison Fuchah. Brian Garno. George Gekas. Justice Lplant. Hannah Engel. Nefemi Ogunsheya. Arlene Tetealardi. Dennis Un. Billy Wolf. And a very special young lady who volunteered her time every week is our student team manager, Bianca Fernandez.
So, I just wanted to invite everyone to join us on June 6th and 7th at the Stocklosa School, where the Wang will be taking on teams from the surrounding area in the Greater Lowell Regional Knowledge Bowl that's sponsored by the Lowell Sun. So, I'll be sure to get you more information as the time comes, but I would love to invite everyone to be there to support our students from Lowell Public Schools and the Wang School. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next order of business would be to approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of March 16th. Mr. Gendron?
Would it be okay if I just made a quick comment?
Absolutely.
To the Knowledge Bowl. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate everybody involved, especially the Wang School. I was out there to officiate one night, and it was very tense, very close. Each match was close, and I was, I missed the, the final event, but I'm very glad that we had this, you know, highlight reel tonight so I could get brought up to date. So, congratulations to all of you, and good luck in the regional bowl.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay. Why don't we just take a two-minute recess so that the students can get out, it will be a little quieter if we can proceed with the meeting then. Just take a two-minute recess?
Awesome.
Yeah.
I'm gonna have to get you a tee-shirt. Awesome. All right, I'm gonna steal your trophy, and I'll bring it back after vacations, okay?
Thank you. It was a special night.
I'll see you guys in June. All right, I'll be in touch.
Who is this? Okay. Okay, so we'll keep that one then. Come back into session. Next order of business would be approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, March 6, 2016. Do we have a motion to accept and place on file? We have a motion by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Ms. Martin to do that. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next, three, three memorials. One for Shirley Ryan, the mother of Pamela Gendron, the greenhouse school principal. One for Patrick McClellan, brother of Karen Beckless, finance and operations account clerk. And George Stewart Jr., a retired police chief of the city of Everett, father-in-law of Lowell High School, paraprofessional Gina Stewart. Please dim the lights. Next, we have motions. The first motion of the evening, if there's no objection, we'll take it up with the subcommittee report number 12. And so, that would bring us to, to motion number nine, which is a motion by Mr. Doherty to request the superintendent provides the committee with a report of the causes and solutions to not having a sufficient number of substitute teachers available to meet district demands, including an update on teacher absentee rates. How is absenteeism data trending compared to past years? The role of professional development held during the school day in terms of the need for substitute teachers? How many days and teachers are impacted? And the recruiting efforts to increase substitute pool pay comparison with nearby districts, and when and how often are substitute trainings offered? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. It's come to my.
I'm sorry, we need a second of the motion.
Oh, sorry.
Second of the motion by Mr. Gignac. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. It's come to my attention that this year in particular, and actually going to the beginning of the school year, there's been more of a dearth in the substitute teachers. We were having classrooms where we have to pull Paris, or we're taking special education staff because we can't leave a class unattended with an adult. So, that's why there's like the three components to it, to really look at the issue of our lack of having enough substitute teachers from the many different components that impact it in terms of, you know, the professional development piece, our absenteeism rates going up. Are we doing enough in recruiting? Is there more we could be doing? Just looking at all of that and really get a comprehensive report with a plan that we can implement as soon as possible so that we don't have this situation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Wendy, further discussion on the motion. Mr. Dakota?
I've spoken to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've spoken to a few other people from other school districts, and they're all having the same issues as we are. They're, they're very short-staffed in terms of substitute teachers, so it's not just indigenous to Lowell. I think all the communities around, surrounding us are having the same problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy, further discussion. If not all in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. Next is subcommittee reports. The first is a report from the policy subcommittee for approval, and approval of the minutes of Tuesday, March 15, 2016. Mr. Hoey, did you want to give a report, or just want to accept the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes right now.
This is a report of progress, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. The next subcommittee report is Student Support Services, report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Tuesday, March 29, 2016. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, the Student Support Services Subcommittee met on Tuesday, March 29. In attendance were myself and Mr. Dakota, as well as Mr. Hoey. And from the school administration, we had Janine Durk, Assistant Superintendent, Margot Ferick, the Director of Alternative Education, Jane Mosher Canty, Council of Student Services, Michael Ortiz, also the Council for Student Services. So, we had two items on the agenda. One was to look at the restraint legislation and policy guidelines. As my colleagues may recall, we received a pretty lengthy report on that a few weeks ago, a month ago or so. And that was based in response to changes from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, tonight, as part of this report, we need to make a formal vote to accept the recommended, well, that would be the motion of the subcommittee, was to accept the recommended changes in terms of bringing Lowell in compliance with these new regulations, which has been impacted beginning January 1. We've been already training people, and, and just, there's quite a bit of extensive material. It has been put online, so people are interested in getting more into the details about the policy. But I think you could just look at it as really two basic things. A real emphasis on not using restraints against students unless it's an issue of safety, their own safety or the safety of staff and others. Really, a much stronger emphasis on behavior support alternatives and training our staff to understand what are some other tools besides using restraint when dealing with students' behavior, students who are behaving inappropriately. And the nice thing about that, just kind of on the side, we learned at the meeting that night was Lowell had already been ahead of the curve with this. We've, with not only having policies in place where restraint was, you know, kind of a last resort thing, but also doing the training and recording the incidents, because that is part of the new legislation, that we need to keep track of every incident that happens in every school and report that data. We had already been doing that for many years, so we're ahead of the curve on that. And then the last item on the agenda, and then we can go back to the actual formal motion, had to do with the Innovation School Planning Grant. As my colleagues might recall, we had a special presentation by Margot Ferick regarding this grant that we've received and what they're doing with the Career Academy with that program, and how that impacts us is if we are going to establish the Career Academy as an innovation school, a separate school, separate from the district in many ways, it would come before the school committee. The timeline is sometime in June for our formal vote to approve that. And there is a lot of information about that as well. I'd be open to if people had any questions. But after some discussion, we had a motion by Mr. Dakota, seconded by myself, to recommend to the committee as a whole that they vote to approve the restraint policy changes as recommended in response to the new legislation. I would offer that in the form of a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Seven yays approved.
Okay, anything else?
Just a, as a report of progress.
Yep. So, we have another motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota, to accept the report as a report of progress. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next is, next is item number 12, which is a subcommittee report from the facility subcommittee, and at that time, we take up a motion by Mr. Gendron, which is item number eight, and the motion reads to request that the superintendent contact the Franco-American school about the possibility of acquiring their building for use by the Lowell Public Schools, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just reporting out on the facility subcommittee meeting held last Thursday, March 31. I was attended by Mr. Gignac, Mr. Hoey, the members, councilors John Leahy and Jim Larry were in attendance, as well as Mr. Frisch, Brian Curley, Director of Operations and Maintenance, and John Dakota, Coordinator of the Family Resource Center, and our bus coordinator. We had three items on the agenda. The first was to review some open work orders for maintenance at our facilities, at our schools. The second was to review some transportation issues that had recently been reported, and the third was an update on modular classrooms, the RFP that we had put out for modular classrooms. The first item on the agenda was the work orders. We have many work orders. Here is a complete list of the thousands of work orders that we have open in our schools. They're all in a database. They're all prioritized, and someday they'll all be addressed. However, recently, the, Mr. Curley, the city manager, and the DPW sat down with, sat down to try and prioritize some of these open issues so that we could focus on the ones that were most important and have a plan for addressing them. And that's this list, so that's, as you can see, significantly smaller, and many of these have actually been addressed already. And there is a plan in place to address all of these high-priority issues by the end of the year. So, I think that's the good news, and I think the message is in the schools that we need to have any issues that might be out there logged in this database. The maintenance department does maintain a database of all issues that have to be logged so that they can be addressed. That was the first issue. The second issue was the transportation issues. We had several reports from residents and some members of the school committee of problems with bus drivers. Bus drivers driving erratically, or at least not driving safely. Mr. Dakota was present. He addressed several individual issues at the meeting. He also encouraged all the members, as well as all the community, if they see an issue of a bus driver not following the rules, not obeying the laws, or driving erratically, it should be reported to central administration so that we can track it. And each issue is tracked, and if there is a problem, bus drivers are reprimanded, and occasionally bus drivers have to be let go if there are repeated issues. So, the message there was that we, any of those open issues, I think, have been addressed as well as they could at this point, and the message is, again, report those issues if we see them so that we can track them and take them to our, our transportation provider. And the final issue was the modular classroom. So, a while back, we put out a RFP for acquiring a modular classroom to address what is an imminent problem with space in the middle schools. We are running up against a real problem starting in September with space in our middle schools. We need to expand. Otherwise, we're gonna be looking at class sizes that I think will be beyond anybody's, anybody's measure of reasonable. So, I'm gonna ask Mr. Frisch, he gave us an update. So I'm going to ask Mr. Frisch, he gave us an update at the meeting. Maybe he has more information, but I'll ask him to give us, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, give us a quick update.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gendron. As I mentioned at the subcommittee meeting, we opened bids in March, and there was only one bidder that submitted a bid. The bid was for one modular unit, two classrooms. The two classrooms would hold about 50 students. The cost was an excess of $500,000. That seemed to us to be excessive for a temporary solution, $500,000 in excess. So we're looking at superintendent, and I have been discussing the space issues along with the, his leadership team, and we're currently looking at different options that will be much more cost-effective. And I'll turn it over to the superintendent if he has any update and if you want to say a few words.
Yes, thank you. We are looking at various options. We have already addressed some of them and talked to the city, that we're going to try to do everything possible to see whether we can accommodate through some shuffling of, and reconfiguring of some of our schools, moving programs around to make space so that we save them. Because if we go with the modulars, you know, the city is responsible for paying that, and I'm sure they will appreciate that we try every single option first before we commit them to spending over half a million dollars. So while we have not abandoned that, because that's our last resort, we're working with various principals. Today, we had another meeting with some principals to try to find a solution that is feasible and allows us to, to, to avoid having to, to make that at expense.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We had, so we got that news at the Facility Subcommittee that we were looking at in excess of half a million dollars for one, two-classroom modular unit for one year. Not to mention the fact that there's setup and breakdown costs if we, if we, you know, decide not to use it in the future. We felt that that was excessive. We had a motion by Mr. Gignac at that time, seconded by Mr. Hoey and approved unanimously to have the superintendent provide a report of all the options to the full school committee at the next school committee meeting. So I will offer that, that motion to the full school committee at this time if I can, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Discussion on that motion? And it probably would be just as easy if we combined it with a motion to accept the report as a report of progress as well.
Yes, please.
If only direction by anybody will do that. Ms. Martin?
Certainly would support that, but could I, I did have a couple of questions, if we could, on the report itself. I know we're looking at the, the modulators in terms of a 50-student kind of solution. Do you have a sense of what the actual problem number is? Because I believe it's greater than 50.
The actual problem, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The actual problem is much larger than that. It's, it's over 200.
Okay.
So the solution of the two, that it would include the two portables, will have to also include some of the schools absorbing the extra, which we don't think is a great idea. Initially, we had started with several portables, and then we, in the, you know, hope, in the hope to reduce the expenditures, we came down to just two in Duane, because that's the only place we could not absorb more, more students. So hopefully, if we can find a solution that by changing, moving programs around, we'll have to do something quite innovative there, we'll bring it up to the school committee and we'll avoid not only having to, to get those two, but hopefully also not have to overcrowd the other middle schools.
As we're having these conversations, is it possible for us to look at FY '18? Because we have, we'll have a 200-student problem next year at the middle school. I believe that bubble continues the year after that. So then we have an additional, I don't know what the number is for that year yet. I don't know if it's an additional 200-student problem or, more or less.
Yes. The same forecast that shows that we have, we had 200 expected for this year, or plus, 200-plus, is the same forecast that shows us that next year, we're going to have another 200, and the following year, and the following year. That's four years in a row. When we, I met with Mr. Dakota around those numbers, he doesn't believe, he believes that this year was correct, but he doesn't necessarily believe that next year will be that many. The following year, because we are already observing a bubble in the current third grade, so he thinks it might happen, but he thinks that there is a little bit of a dip on the next year, and then it'll pick again. So these are just forecasts, and they were issued already a few years back. And I think we're just going to, at this point, to be honest, we're focusing, obviously, on the short term, because the city is waiting for us to make, to make a decision on that. And we will, while we're looking at that, we're obviously having to look at the long term, and we will. Offer, I think there's a motion already out there to, from before even, from the previous school committee, I think it was a motion from Mr. Gendron, asking us to look at the multi-year planning for capacity. So we will, we will definitely be looking at.
There's also a follow-up of asking for a comprehensive report of planning coming into this other year, coming into this current year. So answering either one of those motions would be great as part of this, as part of this report.
Is that all, Ms. Martin? Any further discussion? Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just thinking now, our next full school committee meeting isn't until May, correct? Because we have a budget meeting? So this could be a part of that, a special meeting?
If I may, Mr. Superintendent. I think whatever solution that we, we would recommend will definitely be part of that budget.
Right, okay, that's my assumption. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call on the motion?
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Could you open that door? Thank you.
Can I continue with the, the motion, the Franco motion?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. So I wanted to couple this with my Facility Subcommittee report. This motion is regarding the, you know, considering the Franco-American school. And the spirit of the motion was not to have us run out and buy the Franco-American school. The spirit of the motion was to suggest that we need to keep all of our options open, because as Ms. Martin pointed out, this is not a short-term problem. This is a, this overcrowding in the middle schools is something that we're going to have to address long-term. So we need to come up with a solution, especially hearing that it's half a million dollars for one modular. We need to come up with a solution that could be a little bit more permanent. And perhaps there are facilities in the city that we could acquire, that we could use, that we could lease to alleviate that problem and provide classroom space and smaller class sizes across the district. So with the news that the Franco-American school was closing, I thought I would put this out there. And of course, we all, several of us toured that yesterday. I don't know, Mr. Superintendent, if you want to give your thoughts about the, the facility itself, but I just want to make it clear that my intent is to kind of suggest to the school administration that we need to keep our, keep an open mind and think out of the box a little bit about how we might address this overcrowding in the future.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when you look at the forecast that we were observing and we talked about with Ms. Martin, this isn't something new. Obviously, this was there four years back, and I think, I wish we did have a plan. Unfortunately, because we've getting the support from the state to build the high school, our chances of getting another school built with the support of the state immediately thereafter, I think, are very, very slim. So they're going to have to push us to the, to the end of the line. And so our long-term facility is definitely create permanent capacity, there's no doubt about that, because this is just a solution for one year, we're going to have to build more. We did tour the Franco. It is one of our options. There are other options we're looking at. And I, I'm going to have to defer this to our city, because, you know, the engineers and the maintenance department and people who are much more knowledgeable about what it would take to refit it, there are a lot of things that need to be done. People have visited it, they know what needs to be done. I think if they are serious, if we find out that this is one of the solutions that we're serious about it, I'm sure they're going to dispatch a crew of, you know, knowledgeable technicians and engineers to look at it and see what it would take to get it ready. Maybe September, and if it's not ready for this year, what would it be ready for the following year? We'll probably have a much better chance. But I do agree with you, a solution, we could do all the planning we want, but the solution, we all know it. It's going to have to be creation of permanent, permanent capacity, not temporary capacity.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Just as a point of information on the, on the motion that's, that's before us, I had discussions with the city manager and with the superintendent about the Franco-American school, once it was publicized that it was not going to be available. And what I thought was it would be a good idea to have a little tour of that facility and another piece of property that was over in Centerville that was also for sale at the time. Actually, the Polish-American vets on Coben Street was available, and both of those properties, to me, seemed like they might be worthwhile looking at. So we thought that we would just take a preliminary tour, and then if either one of those properties looked worthwhile, then we'd bring it to the full school committee and the full city council. And so that's, that's the tour that took place yesterday. When we set up the tour, what happened is the Polish-American vets came under agreement, so that was taken off the board. So the only one available was, was a Franco-American yesterday, and that's, that's why we did that tour then. Okay, the next item is, the next item is, is taken off the agenda. The, the bargaining subcommittee did not meet due to the weather, and so that will just be removed from the agenda. And so moving on to the reports of the superintendent, item number 14 is our Restorative Justice School-Community Reparative Agreement. Jay would entertain, well, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, following the events, in the high school, we had entered, we engaged with the restorative justice program from Northeastern University School of Law. And what we have here is a, the report presented by the program. And I'm going to ask Professor Susan Mays Rothstein, did I say it correctly? Good, to come and present it, if you will. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the school committee, Mr. Superintendent, thank you for having a moment with me here this evening. I am Susan Mays Rothstein. I teach at Northeastern University School of Law, and I am so impressed with your students. You have wonderful, wonderful students and a wonderful community. I also am the board chair for our Restorative Justice. It's a small 501(c)(3), which is working to largely divert young people anywhere along the school-to-prison pipeline that is possible to do. And we've had the good fortune of working in Middlesex County through the Middlesex DA's office with many young people that have been diverted through the court system. We had also been called in to speak with and work with Lowell High School, and this was our first opportunity to work in the high school setting. And it was a wonderful experience. There was, it's a question, right? When something, when there's harm in a community, what do you do? What is the response? In a school community, which is a natural community, where you want continuous, not discontinuous relationships, as a law professor, I also teach about discontinuous relationships, that's called lawsuits, right? But in a school setting, you want these relationships to continue. So it's, what has caused me to be so excited about restorative justice practices is the opportunity to heal relationships. That is, to find ways to make things right when things have gone wrong. How do you make it right? And we engaged in two separate sets of efforts. One, it was much more private and is being kept confidential and should be kept confidential. The other was the larger community experience and concerns that were raised. And the report that you may have gotten in your papers, it looks like this. I have more if you want your own, if you want to paper the walls with them. But we worked with a, a group of students. We did what's known as circle practice. These are time-honored approaches that have been created by indigenous peoples and have supported indigenous cultures for eons, actually, long before our common law sort of approach to crime and punishment ever came up. And it puts at its center the community members in relation to one another and how to, how to repair the harm. And so the young people that participated in this were absolutely brilliant. They were so thoughtful. Actually, everything that's in this report came directly from the mouths of your young people. And we, of course, had a mixture of staff and administrators and young people, but the ideas are largely your young people's ideas. The other beautiful thing that the Lowell High School did was it created a task force to work on cultural competence. So what was nice about that is because we're an outside entity, really the community, which is why we've named ourselves our Restorative Justice, the community has to own its own restoration of justice. And, and here, the task force worked extremely hard, and as luck would have it, many of the young people who participated in the circle process also were on the task force. And so they brought the ideas that we came up with in the community circle work and brought it forward in the task force work. And so there's a lot of overlap between what happened in the task force and what we've recommended in this report. And the task force also came up with some things that are new and different than anything that any of the circle work came up with. So personally, I, I couldn't be happier with the outcome of this work. And I, I hope that the Lowell Public Schools will consider this as a process. It's actually being used nationwide very successfully in many very complex school systems, Chicago, San Francisco, New York, there are many, many other school systems, even the Boston Public Schools. I sit on the Code of Conduct Advisory Council for the Boston Public Schools, which is a creature of the Boston School Committee. And, and we have put in the code, the option of restorative justice practices as an alternative to exclusion, which is now required under Chapter 222. This is me being the law professor, right? Chapter 222, our new school discipline statute since July 2014. So, so all schools in the Commonwealth have to think about this. And as an option, Lowell has already taken an enormous step in going in this direction. So thank you so much. I'm here, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everyone involved in this project. I think it would make sense to refer this report to the Lowell High School Subcommittee for report, for further discussion. And at that subcommittee meeting, perhaps we can invite everyone that was involved in creating this report to have a dialogue with the subcommittee and talk about your findings and your recommendations. I think that that's a good idea.
So you're making a motion?
I make that as a form of motion.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion, seconded by Mr. Hoey? Discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? All opposed, so voted? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Professor.
Next item is the 21st Century Learning Center Extended Summer Program Grant. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we have Carolyn Rochelow right here, and Carolyn is in her dual role. She's also another star.
I'm not just a knowledgeable lady.
She does, she does many roles for us.
Yeah. So really, my primary role is in our extended time and summer programming. And so we were very fortunate to apply for a Department of Education grant for the Maury and Shaughnessy School to extend their summer learning program by an additional two weeks. So students at the Maury and Shaughnessy will go for a full six weeks of educational enrichment this summer, which we're very this summer, which we're very excited about. We have had this grant in the past. This will be our second year. And we've got really interesting data on the students that have attended. We've looked at their Fanta's and Pennell, which is their reading assessment scores. And we've compared the kids that have come in our summer programs to kids that didn't come. So we look at their spring scores and we look at their fall scores. And we've seen really significant gains made for students. Even if the gains aren't as huge as we'd like, they're certainly less loss for summer learning. As you know, summer learning is a huge issue for our students particularly because in the summer, there isn't necessarily a lot of enrichment that's going on. And so we really try to provide that. So within Lowell Public Schools, within, within all of our grants, we provide summer programming for about 2,000 kids in the summer, from the high school to middle and elementary and special education programming. But this particular grant allows us to extend our summer program at the Maury and Shaughnessy Schools.
Thank you. Any discussion? Chair would entertain a motion to accept it as a report of progress by Mr. Hoey, motion by Mr. Hoey, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next item is home education. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a request for home, for homeschooling by Mr. and Mrs. Gibson and, from 76 19th Street. And we recommend and to support the request. Thank you.
Both approve. We have a motion approved by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Moving on to new business. The next item is to accept a grant award to the Wang School. We have a motion to approve. Motion approved by Star, seconded by Mr. Decodo. Discussion on the motion. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
The next item is the food service management contract to authorize the superintendent to put out an RFP. We have a motion to approve by Mr. Gendron, seconded by, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Mr. Gignac?
Just to clarify, I think the, the RFP, it already, has already gone out and closed. This is to vote on the actual award.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I should've called on the superintendent first.
It's, I think it's miswritten on the agenda.
Mr. Superintendent, did you want to speak on that?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to defer to Mr. Gary Fresh to present that.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I'm happy to talk about this. The contract with Airmark Educational Services will expire at the close of this fiscal year. Therefore, a request for proposal was developed to solicit proposals for the new one-year contract with two one-year options for the operation and maintenance of the district's food service program. The RFP was written in conformance with applicable statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The RFP was made available beginning January 19, 2016. The RFP was opened February 10, 2016. Two companies submitted proposals, Airmark and Chartwells, both excellent companies. The process to evaluate the award was a two-step process, similar to a two-step in a dance routine. The evaluation of the proposals was completed, as I said, in a two-process manner. The first step was to compare the quality of the proposals by each, submitted by each of the two firms. We formed a subcommittee composed of one principal at the elementary, one at the middle school, one at the high school, myself and Mike Cassidy, Director of Personnel. We evaluated both proposals based on 23 quality criteria. And we determined basically that it was a draw, that both were highly advantageous in the rankings. And then we looked at the second step. And there, the cost, there was a cost difference. The three-year proposal submitted by Airmark, the cost was $14,757. And Chartwells was $16,300,000. Now, within that proposals, they would each generate profit each year. And their guaranteed profit back to the school district, the highest one was Airmark at $1,700,000. And Chartwells was approximately $1.3 million. So looking at both the quality criteria and the price proposal, and we had the advantage of having to be able to see the operations of Airmark these past three years and working with the food service director, it is my pleasure to recommend Airmark as the successful bidder in, in this RFP proposal. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions without opening, open the floor up at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion approved on the floor. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fresh, I was just curious about the revenue sharing portion there that you mentioned. Is that a fixed amount that they'll pay us over three years? Or is that very depending on their revenue?
It's a one-year proposal. And first year is a $1.7 million.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would, it's an annual.
That's a fixed amount.
Fixed amount, $1.7. That could go up based upon operations, how successful.
And this contract is a one-year contract?
With two options, two one-year options to.
I see.
To go forward.
Is the revenue sharing portion fixed in the options? Or will that be TBD?
I believe that's the same, $1.7 each year.
Each year. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any further discussion, Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I know in the past, in our proposals, we've seen commitments for capital outlay, where they made significant investments in the kind of school infrastructure. Was that any part of this RFP process?
Chartwells offered a, a fixed capital improvement, but that was $100,000. The $1.7 million, we can allocate that towards capital improvement for the cafeterias only. That's within the statutes.
But, but it's, the, the payback we can spend, I mean, it's general fund, right? We don't have to spend it within the cafeteria.
No, the $1.7 is restricted towards cafeteria operations, indirect costs as well. Some of the indirect costs are custodial cleanup and their benefits and salary.
Okay. My other question was, in the past, we had introduced in our, the last RFP process, a mandate for locally sourced food to be part of our, our programming. Was that included in this RFP as it was in the past?
Yes, it is. It was the same.
So the answer was the same from both in terms of what the percentage of local, do we know what that percentage was?
I can get back to you on that.
That would be great.
Question.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gignac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just procedurally, I think in years past, it's, I know, Mr. Fresh, you weren't here when this RFP was released, but typically, the RFP would come before the full school committee to authorize the superintendent to put it out for proposals. I don't think that happened this time around. I think it was mentioned to the committee that this was going to happen, and then it was released without much discussion of the body. I'm happy to support the, the award. But I think just moving forward, any of these big-ticket items should, should come before the committee for the committee to authorize the RFP.
Absolutely. I just want to add one more thing that I failed to mention. One of the questions you had, Mr. Gignac, was regarding the quality of the food service program and do we have opportunities to provide suggestions and improvement? And from that question, you know, I've talked with the superintendent and we both agreed to form a committee once, to be held once a month, sort of a parent advisory committee, to have the opportunity for input into the food service program so that we could have quality improvement continuously throughout the term of the contract. And our goal is to increase participation and provide excellent service to the students and staff. And I mentioned that to Airmark, and they're more than happy to provide that time and participation.
Anything else? Ms. Martin?
Just to reference Mr. Gignac's point, I, I do think that, and certainly with Mr. Fresh just coming on, I can understand. I mean, we're also still in kind of a no-man's land in terms of what our policy is for a student, for the school committee being informed about major purchases. It was tabled about four meetings ago. It hasn't returned to us in terms of the administration's request to go down to 5,000, oh, I'm sorry, to go up to 10,000, I'm not sure what the, the state, where we were discussing keeping it at five. I have noticed since Mr. Fresh has returned, has joined us, that we are seeing lower numbers. We are seeing 5,000, 9,000s, which we weren't seeing before in the permission to enter. So I'm assuming we're going, we, we've been adhering to that again. But we don't, we haven't finalized that conversation in terms of what the process is for things to come to us prior to being, whether it's an RFP or any of the other purchasing requirements that we're, that we were discussing.
That's an excellent point. And wanted to get my feet wet here first before we tackle that issue. And want to have some more dialogue with the subcommittee, finance subcommittee, and to come up with a joint recommendation. Been really, since I've started, been, my focus has been the budget. And that's taken majority of my time.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Moving on to convention conferences. Item number 21 has been withdrawn. So there are just three, items 19, 20, and 22. The chair would entertain a motion to bundle all three together and to approve all three. We have a motion of that effect by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
That concludes the agenda for open session. The chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session with the idea that we would adjourn from executive session. We have a motion of that effect by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you.
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 Are you continually involved?
If I'm invited, I will certainly be very happy.